Could you please call the board?
Certainly.
Supervisor Moore?
Here.
Councilwoman McNamara?
Here.
Councilman Iasili?
Here.
Councilman Pell?
Present.
Alright, well let's get started with your review of the draft agenda. We're going to have eight public hearings. First is to consider the use of community housing funds for the acquisition of land located at ninety North Sealy Cox Road North State. The second is to consider the use of community housing funds for the production of rental housing located at one forty Maple Avenue in Flanders. The third is to consider the use of community housing funds for the acquisition of land located at two oh five North Sealy Cox Road North State. The fourth is to consider the use of community housing funds for the acquisition of six forty five East Montalk Highway, Shinacock Hills, for the creation of new affordable senior housing units. The fifth is to change target areas of various CPF parcels to village and home improvement projects, recreation and open space, and to amend the CPF management and stewardship plan to include the properties under the correct designation. The sixth is to change target areas of various CPF parcels to wetlands target area, and amend the CPF management and stewardship plan to include the properties under the correct designation. The seventh is to consider the acquisition of six seventy Middle Line Highway in the Hamlet of Bridgehampton, New York, and to amend the CPF management and stewardship plan to include the property. And the eighth public hearing is to consider the acquisition of a portion of the lands of Sad Guy located at seven seven five Middle Line Highway in the Hamlet of Watermill, New York.
Town Board Resolution four nine two one three, amend the town board resolution number two zero two five dash two fourteen to include revised transcript rates for adjustments court.
Town Board Resolution ID four nine one two six, co-sponsored by Councilwoman Pell, authorize amendment to realty funding for trustees twenty twenty one Mill Pond Water Poly Grant to include the stock in the GL and Mill Pond.
Town Board Resolution ID number four nine two zero five to authorize the purchase of body armor of law enforcement from New York State OGS contract with various contractors. And Town Board Resolution ID number four nine one five five to authorize the purchase of firearms ammunition from less equal products from various contractors using the New York State OGS contracts.
Town Board Resolution four nine one five eight, authorize the purchase of a heel garbage truck model PT one thousand from the Bassel Systems Inc. construction contract. Town Board Resolution four nine two zero five, responsible for Councilwoman McNamara, authorize the purchase of playgrounds placed within the site and many of these are being retracted for products from the East
Company LLC and Raymond Michael Limited using Town of Islay contracts.
Town Board Resolution ID number four nine two two six to authorize the purchase of steel and aluminum from Suffolk County Contract with Rapid Steel Supply Corp. Town Board Resolution ID number four nine one eight four to authorize purchases from the Ergonomic Group using Omni Partners Contract. Town Board Resolution ID number four nine one five six to authorize purchases of maintenance, repair, and install for radios and I think, yeah, take the apostrophe out, and miscellaneous equipment for emergency vehicles using Rockland County Contracts. Town Board Resolution ID number four nine two one nine to authorize the supervisor to execute a twenty twenty five cooperative agreements with neighboring villages for the town to provide shared computer services.
Town Board Resolution four nine two one five, authorize the supervisor to sign a contract with J. Pontieri PE DPC to provide professional engineering service in connection with the expansion of the existing softball field at Iron Point Park and Flanders.
I've worked on this with Kristen Sunday, could I be asked added as a co-sponsor?
Myself too.
Yeah, let's, certainly.
It's a good project.
They did put money in the budget for it.
Yes.
Of course.
Town Board Resolution four nine two two five, authorize supervisor to sign contract with L.K. McLean Associates Engineer and Survey DPC to provide engineer and survey association with design and intersection improvement of Norak Road and Norak Long Beach Road side harbor.
Town Board-
Okay, sorry, can I be added to that matter of fact?
Sure. Yes, got it. Town Board Resolution ID number four nine two two zero, authorize the supervisor to sign a contract with Local TV Inc. in order to simulcast programming on sun twenty TV, the cable television public access channel.
Town Board Resolution ID four nine two two two, authorize supervisor to sign a grant with University at Buffalo, the State University of New York, for the placement of college interns. It should say intern, no S. It's no cost to the town, it's one intern for the summer, and this is to formalize the agreement to allow her to get credit for it.
So inside, you might need to get rid of the S as well?
Yeah, and add an A to place.
We are as a school.
Okay, that's what I was talking about, yeah.
Sorry.
Okay. Okay. Town Board Resolution ID number four nine two one eight to authorize the supervisor to sign any and all documents with Notice Technologies Inc. for alarm billing invoices and payment software. Town Board Resolution ID number four nine two one seven, co-sponsored by Councilmember Iasili, to authorize the supervisor to sign contract extension with Hampton Hopper LLC for the shuttle services associated with Southport commuter connection.
Town Board Resolution four nine one two one, co-sponsored with McNamara and Asaiwa, authorize supplement, authorize sup- supplyment funds for two thousand twenty-two Lake Agro South Park Improvement Project, Water Quality Project.
I think I was supposed to be on that, would you add me too?
The whole board.
Certainly.
Town Board Resolution ID number four nine two three nine to authorize the supervisor to execute a no-cost extension of term of contract for Riverside Sewer District Professional Service Agreement with Leonard Makhazy MBA CPA. Town Board Resolution ID number four nine two one four, authorize the supervisor to execute an agreement with Deff Sonder LLC to provide design improvements to the Town Boardroom Broadcast System. Yay, that'll be welcome. Town Board Resolution ID number four nine two four three, authorize the supervisor to execute any and all documents for the tactical targeted grant program for homeland security and emergency services. And Town Board Resolution ID number four nine two four four to authorize the supervisor to sign any and all documents for the submission of a grant application to New York State for the year twenty twenty-two Critical Infrastructure Grant Program. And those are gold, do not require matches.
Town Board Resolution ID four eight eight seven four, authorize supervisor to sign any and all documents regarding the purchase of a highway side dump sweeper from Suffolk County Brake Service using Sourcewell Contract.
Town Board Resolution ID four nine two one six, co-sponsored by Supervisor Moore, authorize supervisor to sign any and all documents with cash to provide maintenance, parts, and labor for the Hampton Bay's water district.
Town Board Resolution ID number four nine two two four, co-sponsored by Councilwoman Pell, to authorize the supervisor to sign no-cost contract extensions for the twenty twenty-two Awards of Community Preservation Fund twenty percent water quality improvement project fund. Town Board Resolution ID number four nine one six four to authorize the use of Eastern Suffolk Bocce's Cooperative Bidding Program for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
Town Board Resolution ID number four nine one five one, award and authorize supervisor to sign contract for two Chevrolet pickup trucks with flowers and accessory with from Suffolk County Brake Service Inc.
Town Board Resolution ID number four nine one two nine to award and authorize the supervisor to sign a contract with AAAA Long Island Waste Oil for removal and recycling and disposal of waste oil. Town Board Resolution ID number four nine one two eight to award and authorize the supervisor to sign a contract with S&amp;M Tire Recycling Inc. for scrap tire recycling services.
Town Board Resolution ID four nine one four eight, award and authorize supervisor to execute a contract with DiCo Construction Inc. for Lake Agro and South Park Improvement. Is that right, the South Park Improvement?
Yes, South Park Improvement.
You started as a trustee.
South Parking Lot Improvement.
Yeah, should be Park Lot.
Do I need to put lot on there?
No, Kristen says it's okay, it's okay. Town Board Resolution ID four nine one two three, recall and amend twenty twenty-four dash three one nine, authorize supervisor to sign a so- source contract with Old Dominic Bush Company for Old Dominic Bush Company OEM parts.
Town Board Resolution four eight nine one nine, recall and amend Town Board Resolution twenty twenty-three dash nine nine seven, authorize supervisor to execute a contract with L.K. McLean Associates Engineering and Surveying DPC for professional services related to improvements at Red Creek Park Hampton Base.
I'd like to be added on to that, please. Town Board Resolution ID four nine two three one, reject all bids to install and repair sidewalks to include curbing.
Town Board Resolution four nine two two three, rescind contract with Vin Douglas for mobile concessions at Flying Point Beach. And I just wanted to note that that was at his request or not? Kicking him out.
Town Board Resolution four nine one eight zero, co-sponsored by Councilwoman McNamara, twenty twenty-five notice to bidders for activity vehicles.
Town Board Resolution ID four eight nine nine five, twenty twenty-five notice to bidders requiring contract for filled up reclaim. Town Board Resolution ID four eight nine eight nine, twenty for, twenty twenty-five notice to bidders requiring to contract for pavement repair. Town Board Resolution ID four nine two three eight, twenty twenty-five reject bids and second notice to bidders for a yacht club drive bulkhead.
Town Board Resolution ID number four nine two three six, to amend the twenty twenty-four budget for various departments. Town Board Resolution ID number four nine two four zero, co-sponsored with Councilmembers Pell and Iasili, to amend the twenty twenty-five adopted budget for community housing projects.
Town Board Resolution ID four nine zero one five, co-sponsored with Councilwoman McNamara, amend the twenty twenty-five waste management fee schedule.
And that is to remove the charge to set it's federal.
As discussed at the previous work session.
Yeah, I'd like to be on that, that's a nice thing to do.
Go ahead. How about Michael, if you had the whole town board?
Sure, if the whole town board would like, yeah.
Yes.
Good for the president. Town Board Resolution ID number four nine one five two, to amend the twenty twenty-five dash twenty twenty-nine capital budget for the Flanders Community Center Outdoor Improvement Project.
Would you like to be added to that, please?
Myself too.
Town Board Resolution ID number four nine two two eight, to amend the twenty twenty-five dash twenty twenty-nine capital budget for the garbage patcher progress. Town Board Resolution ID number four nine two three zero, to authorize purchase order encumbrances twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. And Town Board Resolution ID number four nine two four two, to appoint the Water Quality Advisory Committee for twenty twenty-five. No liaison on that one?
Bill?
Right.
Swiss Councilman Pell?
Yeah. On the board.
Oh. Town Board Resolution ID number four nine one one eight, continuation of legal services by Campolo, Middleton, and McCormick LOP as it relates to litigation filed against the Town of Southampton involving River Rock Structured Capital LLC for twenty twenty-five. Town Board-
I was gonna say, I think Ray was asking Bill if he wanted to be added as the liaison.
He wanted to be added as a liaison.
The Water Quality Advisory Committee.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, Water Quality, what am I doing?
Adding Bill as a co-sponsor.
As co-sponsor.
As a co-sponsor, okay. Got it. Sorry.
Thanks for that.
Town Board Resolution ID number four nine one one five, continuation of legal services by Farrell Fritz PC as it relates to the matter of the Town of Riverhead et al. versus the Town of Southampton et al. and the Riverside Sewer District Project. Town Board Resolution ID number four nine one one six, the continuation of legal services by Morgan Lewis and Bachi's LOP on behalf of the Town of Southampton. Town Board Resolution ID number four nine one one four, to amend the twenty twenty-five Department of Land Management Zoning Board of Appeals fee schedule.
Town Board Resolution ID four nine one eight one, co-sponsored with Councilman Iasili, authorization of cost reimbursement waiver for the Friends of the Hampton Bay's Libraries for a Festival to be held on May tenth, twenty twenty-five.
Town Board Resolution ID number four nine one five seven, to authorize Peconic Bay Region CPF Tax Refund pursuant to the first-time home buyer's exemption for Caroline Janis.
Can I be added as a co-sponsor, please?
Town Board Resolution ID four nine one eight two, co-sponsored with Councilman Iasili, cost reimbursement waiver for the Remsenbergs Beyond Cayman Free District Annual Memorial Day Parade on the Bay twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, from ten AM to eleven thirty AM. That is the longest marching parade in the Town of Southampton. I mean, distance.
It's a long one.
Wear your sneakers.
Town Board Resolution ID number four nine one four seven, to appoint Amanda Ristano to Town Investigator in Public Safety. Town Board Resolution ID number four nine one five nine, to appoint Anthony Monzen Alvarado to Maintenance Mechanic One in the Parks Department. Town Board Resolution ID number four nine two zero two, to appoint Brandon Drummond to Network and System Specialist One position from the Civil Service List. Doesn't need to say for the comptroller in the comptroller's office? Oh, no.
It's just under that department.
Okay. Town Board Resolution ID number four nine one six one, to appoint Michael Pace to Groundskeeper One in the Parks Department. Town Board Resolution ID number four nine zero five zero, to appoint Seth Farrell to Ordnance Enforcement Officer in Public Safety.
Town Board Resolution ID four nine one seven zero, attendance at homicide investigator's course in College Point, New York. Officer Brandon Dubrow and Officer Erica Moncato are participating in that training. Town Board Resolution ID four nine one seven two, attendance at Mechanical Breaching Operator and Instructor in Glassboro, New Jersey. And that would be Police Officer Sula and Police Officer Gerst.
Town Board Resolution ID number four nine two two seven, to authorize the town supervisor to sign a stipulation of agreement.
Town Board Resolution ID four nine two one one, co-sponsored with Councilman Iasili, update town workplace violence prevention programs.
Town Board Resolution ID number four nine two four one, co-sponsored by the entire board, which is a notice of public hearing to consider the acquisition of one twelve Mill Pond Lane in the Hamlet of Watermill, New York, and to amend the CPF project plan and the CPF management and stewardship plan to include the property. Town Board Resolution ID number four nine one four one, to notice a public hearing to consider the historic landmark designation of the site recognized as the Reiner Fish House located at four Beaver Dam Road in West Hampton. And we're going to be having a work session on March twentieth to talk about that prior to the public hearing. And Town Board Resolution ID number four nine one three eight, notice a public hearing to consider the historic landmark designation of the structure recognized as the Diamond Dairy Barn and Studio located at eighteen Flying Point Road Watermill. And similarly, we're going to have a work session on March twentieth to talk about that one also.
Town Board Resolution ID four nine one three one, accept a deed of dedication in connection with a map of old stables at
Town Board Resolution four nine zero two eight, authorizing the use of community housing funds for the acquisition of the-
Can you help go back through? I think stables and stuff, maybe one place from the other. In the prezo, it's regular stables, but-
Yeah, the title is. The title is wrong.
Yeah.
Town Board Resolution four nine zero two eight, authorizing the use of community housing funds for the acquisition of the property located at six forty-five East Montalk Highway, Shinacock Hills, New York, by the Town of Southampton using authority to develop new senior housing units.
I just want to know before we close, Sunday, Kristen will be getting you an add-on for the deadline today. Janet Sheridan did go to the Suffolk County Planning Commission yesterday, and they approved our extension of moratorium, so we'll have an add-on resolution for that.
I just need a written thing from Janice, so as soon as we can get that, we're ready to go.
And-
It'll either be an add-on or, hopefully be an add-on, if not a walk-on.
Do you have any idea what time we'll get it by, so I can hold it?
I have to wait for Janice.
If you can hold it, I just wanted to make it note to the public that that will be on.
If we can't do it as an add-on, we do it as a walk-on.
Is it coming from Janice?
No, it's coming from me, but I need something from Janice to put in writing that we have an okay from Suffolk County Planning Commission.
And that last resolution by Councilwoman Iasili.
I'll check the financial impact.
Uh, yeah, it's just that it doesn't, it says in the body that it includes closing costs, but in the impact, it doesn't include that, so I don't know if that's-
We'll clear that up before.
Thank you.
Alright, very good.
Okay.
Excellent. Keep that in book. Thank you.
Alright, so now we're going to move forward with our review of parks and recreation capital projects. Come on up, it's Kristen Dulles, our Director, Parks Director, and Daryl Ballmer, Assistant Parks Director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Getting a first friend?
Yeah, I can feel it in the air. Yes, yes, yes.
You're being ready, people want to go outside now.
And I'm just happy the pump plug room is open.
Yeah.
Oh my god, I can't even imagine. Yeah, that was, that was a big wait, so hopefully it continues that way and everything goes smoothly. Well, good morning, thanks for having us. Um, so as you mentioned, we're here to update you on capital projects that we are managing in our department.
Do you, well, who are you giving to Sunday?
Okay, I actually grabbed the wrong copy.
Those are all extra ones, they're gone.
Perfect, thank you. Okay, so we have several projects that we've completed and have ongoing. So if you don't mind, we'll just start the list from the top and kind of work our way down. Yeah. North Sea Park, we, the additional pickleball court installation is complete. The new playground installation is complete. The sidewalk extension to connect the skate park with the access road was completed, so that gravel that was temporarily there has been removed. The bocce court construction is almost complete. Parks Maintenance will be installing the playing surface and dasher boards in the coming weeks. We anticipate a spring twenty twenty-five opening. Uh, we requested additional CBBG funding in the twenty twenty-five allocations for site improvements to now connect the sidewalk to the SYS facility. And that will go to the playground. And we already have now a sidewalk that connects from the playground to the restrooms, to the bocce courts, and to the pickleball courts. So that's all been done in the past few years. It'll be completely connected, ADA accessible. So that will be kind of the last little piece of the puzzle there.
This is the last piece, that's our point.
Yes, and then, yeah, and then that park should be pretty good shape for a while, you know? We've done numerous improvements there.
The bocce courts almost completed, yeah.
Yeah, so the, the forms were poured and all the surrounding concrete was laid and the shade structure has been installed. So we're just waiting for the fill, the bluestone fill, that we'll put in in the spring.
I know, we're getting a shade structure that's terrific.
Yes.
Yeah, it's nice.
One of those, like, the sail, the triangles?
Oh, no, it's, well, it's actually like, more like a pavilion. It's like, like a little steel pavilion that's kind of centered.
Over the bocce court?
Not over the whole thing, like, in the center, so like, while you're playing, you could, like, I'm planning to put some picnic tables in there, so like, you'll be able to sit while you're playing bocce, and then, you know, I guess when it's not your turn, you'll wait, and then, you know.
That's a nice feature.
Yeah, and they've been reoriented so that they're not running east-west anymore, so the sun isn't in your eyes. All the courts and the bocce courts, pickleball courts, everything's oriented north-south now, which is preferred for any type of court.
We're already getting compliments too, because I believe somebody from the village had reached out to us and wanted to know who our installer was, you know, so I don't know if there's something coming down the pipe in the village, but they had reached out to us earlier in the week, so. Makes you feel great? Makes me feel really good.
Red Creek Park, the eight pickleball courts and three new tennis courts are installed and getting heavily utilized. The new basketball courts were completed, those are being heavily utilized. The west turf conversion was complete, also some new sidewalks leading up to that and connecting to the restroom facility. The hockey rink is still in progress because unfortunately there were some issues with the tiles that were installed. So we've been working with the vendor on that project, and they have been working with the manufacturer of the actual tile, so we've learned that they're going to replace all the tiles in the court. So we're just waiting on those to be delivered and installed at this point.
Any idea when that's going to be?
Um, we don't have an exact date yet, because we just learned earlier this week that they finally agreed to, because we said, "We don't want any of these tiles, we want you to take everything out." So we finally learned earlier this week that that's what's going to happen, so now we're pushing for the date.
Yeah.
So we're hoping still spring of this year, but that's been unfortunately the holdup with that.
Glad you held firm on that.
Yeah, it's, it's taken some time, but we wanted to make sure that it was done the appropriate way, so.
Yeah, the manufacturer also wanted to, like, test the tiles and see what the, you know, what the defect was, so. Yeah, it just took a little time, so, but now I think we're on a good path now to, to get it done, hopefully before spring.
Um, we had requested CBBG money to redo the pathway around the Activity Center building there, which we received, and we're now moving forward with that work. So that's also going to create a new pathway to the shaded pavilion and to the playground there. So again, we're always looking to improve any type of ADA access whenever we do these projects. So we're anticipating to have that done this spring. I think we are at the PO, right?
Yes, that's already in place. There's actually, in the back of your packets there, there's a, a map of the sidewalks that are going to be replaced. Uh, yep, that one right there, so you'll see pretty much all the stuff around the Activity Center is getting replaced. The driveways are get, driveway, like, aprons that access some of the garage doors there are getting replaced, and then you'll see how it connects to the pavilion in the park there as well.
Yes.
We do too.
And it brings it up to the actual height of the restroom doors, so that it's-
No stuff, that's correct.
Correct, yeah, right now it's not truly, the interior of the restrooms are ADA, but the access up to it was not ideal, so that will correct that. Um, let's see, Red Creek Skate Park, we have to amend and recall the resolution next week to change the new, to the new GL that was created for that project. And we plan to start community outreach and design with L.K. May, who was already on contract for it, starting this spring, so.
We've fully funded it for this year.
Yes.
So is there any way that we get the design done or to bid for this year?
Oh, yeah, yeah, our, our plan is going to be to try to get it done by, by the end of the year. So the plan is that next week there'll be a resolution on to amend the existing resolution and contract to reflect- So the plan is that next week there'll be a resolution on to amend the existing resolution and contract to reflect the new GL that was approved in the capital budget. And then from there, we've already spoken to the consultants, L K M A., and they're basically, you know, boots on the ground, ready to go as soon as they have the new approval signed and sealed.
Yeah, so we just had to wait for the capital monies to become available for us to move forth with the purchase order.
But I mean, when you say community outreach and then the claim to do the-
So the way we see the design going is, and this is how we've talked about with L K M A., is that basically they're going to come up with a kind of schematic, you know, conceptual design. And then from there, we will invite the public to kind of decide if it's like, do we want to add something, take something away? So we'll have a pretty good idea, I mean, we've already kind of talked to their consultant. I don't know if you remember, we had met with that guy Tito, like I think it was over a year ago. And he already had some ideas of what he was going to do for our park. So, you know, it's just going to be a matter of trying to fine tune it with the community and make sure it meets everybody's needs.
And then go out to bid, but we projected the million-two is worth of cost.
We may not have to go out to bid, because there's actually a requirements contract with Laser Industries that works with California skate parks to do concrete skate park designs. So we may be able to, you know, if we get to the right spot, we may be able to kind of fast track that a little bit and cut out the bidding process. But it'll be, we have to make sure that obviously it works within the budget and, you know, that we're getting everything we want, so.
And that's the last piece on that park too, once that's done, that whole park's going to be really polished.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
Bemis.
Yep. Yeah, we, I mean, yeah, the only other thing we can really do there is, we have ideas for the future to ask for more CDBG money. Because Kara and Julie over there have been just great in giving, you know, being able to get us money to do these like smaller sidewalk improvements, ADA access improvements and stuff like that, so. That's really just where we go from there, it's just-
Yeah, the parking area is, might need some attention.
Yeah, work it a little bit.
But, yeah, we, the town, you know, has given us funding, we turfed three fields there, we've redone all the courts, we're redoing the skate park. We're doing the sidewalks around the building, so it's in good shape.
Yeah, largely going to feel new probably by the end of the year, so that's good.
I like that, you know, take care of what we have, make all the repairs we need to. Okay.
Hampton West, we're in the process of sending out an RFP for Design Services. We touched base with Gem Messiano, and I saw that she reached out just to ensure that she was okay to move forward on her side. So we, you know, we went through the grant requirements again and just to ensure that we have everything that will be needed by the time that the application is due, which is at the end of July. So I think we're in good shape there. We're going to start pulling everything together that's needed and then, you know, work on the design once we have somebody retained. And the town now has a professional services master list of contractors. So we're just going to send a scope service out to, you know, a bunch of people on that list, and then once we get it back, it's short order.
And the tennis courts and-
Yeah, yeah, well, the tennis courts, the, yeah, all the courts at that park is kind of what we're hoping, the plan will establish where we can maybe maximize and kind of improve the layout there a little bit. And then add more parking, because that's, I mean, we'd like to, you know, maybe incorporate at least into the schematic plan, like where a bathroom could go. But one of the things that was pointed out was that we don't want to ask for too much coming out the gate to the grant, because then it might look like, you know, like we're funding all this money and then, you know, they were asking for a smaller amount and like, well, you know. So we were advised that it would be better if we had kind of a phasing approach, where like we say, okay, for the first phase, we want to make sure we get the courts and the parking lot kind of oriented correctly. And then down the road, we can then maybe go out and maybe even ask for another grant to do the bathrooms.
And then do we go to the primaries question with all of that?
Well, we have a call into Janice Shearer to discuss some of those elements.
I think if we stay within our existing footprints, it should be okay.
I would think so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we're going to, obviously-
If anything, we might, we're looking to re-vegetate some areas.
Yeah.
I think if you don't put light, additional lighting in, you probably don't need any improvement.
Yeah, and that's not in the plan, so.
But I think that that grant can pay up to six hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
It can, and we intend to ask for the full grant amount. But the portion he's talking about, just the courts alone, was at one point three. So I think what she's saying is rather than asking for like two point, like saying that your project is two point three, which would include the restroom and other elements, you know, stick with the first phase. Meaning that the grant will fund like fifty percent of what you're asking.
Okay, that makes sense.
Iron Point Park, we're in the process of retaining an engineering firm to design the field expansion and provide a SWIP plan. Because we, it requires a SWIP plan since we're going to be clearing more than an acre there. And construction anticipated to begin in the fall.
So this is expanding the field, but it's also going to accommodate soccer now?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, we had, so when I laid out the field dimensions, I was able to get, I think it's a college-sized, I would determine it was a college-sized soccer field that could go, you know, kind of running out, out of the, you know, to the outfield. And there'd be, there's enough room once we expand the field out to three hundred and like thirty feet to do that, so. So you can't both play at the same time? No, no, no. But, but yeah, I mean, you know, I think what likely will end up happening is that it actually might look like the soccer aspect becomes more popular there.
But then the men's softball league would have someone to play.
Mm-hmm, yeah, and they're still very much, yeah. I speak to them regularly.
So we don't have to get the word out.
Right, yeah, so they're, they're ready, once it's built, they're ready.
Oh, that's so great, it'd be really nice to have some activity there.
Yeah, well.
Yeah, so we already had like a proposal back from an engineering firm that's going to basically do a field design, topographic survey, and then, and then do the SWIP plan. And then we can present that to the planning, you know, Towns Planning Commission and get that approved, then we can start the work. Again, we're planning to utilize some requirements contracts. So for the clearing and maybe even some in-house labor can work on like doing the planting of like the grass seed, the seeding and stuff like that, so. We're always trying to find ways to save money and streamline the process, you know.
Much appreciated.
Okay, East Quogue Village Green, we're in the process of working with a playground company to design the playground, which we have a final layout, I think, right?
Yeah, as of, as of yesterday, we had a final layout designed, so.
Included a lot of inclusive elements in this design for wheelchair access and sensory-
And I want to thank you guys for working with Brigana Gadding, a community member who was really, wanted to be part of the process to make sure that there were, you know, inclusive elements in this, in this playground. She was thankful of what you were able to include and she understood, you know, like, it's not going to be the full playground, but it's, it's, at least, you know, we have these items at each location, it's a nice thing to try to incorporate where we can.
Yeah, she was great and gave a lot of good insight.
And she said, she saw her again this past weekend, she said, thank you again for including her.
I think she's going to be really happy with the final product.
Yeah.
We, we were, we really kind of stuck it to the contractor and said, we need this, this, and this, and make it work within our budget, so I think she's going to be really happy with the final product.
That money in the budget is going to be adequate to cover?
Yeah, yeah, we will, we'll make it work, we have, we're good, we're good there.
We're backing into it.
Yeah, the thing with, you know, adding those inclusivity features is it does, unfortunately, it shouldn't be that way, but it does add a lot of cost into designing of the playground and, you know, because there has to be approaches to get, you know, people with wheelchairs up into the playground. So it just, it does add cost, but we've managed to, you know, kind of as Kristen said, back into it. And really, I think we're getting a really good design that's going to really appeal to the community, so.
Some really good swing features as well.
Yes, yes, the swings are-
We have a swing where a parent can face the child on the swing, both sitting at the same time.
Oh.
Yeah, the mommy and me swing.
Yeah, or daddy and me.
Or daddy and me.
That playground wasn't new when my now twenty-two-year-old toddler, so it's definitely a need.
It's, um, yeah, it's quaint.
One of the, one of the big things about that too is we're going to be getting the safety surfacing.
Yes, no more wood chips.
Yeah, no more wood chips.
Be rubber tile safety surfacing, and that's another thing, whenever you add elements like long approaches, they have to have certain fall zone areas around them, which adds to the surface area, which surface area, the surface is almost as much as the equipment, if not more, in certain cases. So like you said, every time you add a little something, it makes every part of the project go up. But I think we came up with a really good design within our budget, so.
That's important, because when she saw on Saturday, she said, you know, like West Hampton Beach, when they did their playground, they have elements of inclusion in the playground, but you can't access them because the access approach to those items is not there, so.
Right, but I think we've handled it, we've covered it, we've covered it.
And, yeah, we're planning to also make the access up to the gazebo ADA.
Yeah, we got that feedback from her, so we're looking at a way to make it so that, you know, they can have that, take benefit of the shade in the gazebo as well.
And then also, the next part of East Quogue Village Green is that we're working with C P F. to fund installation of new paths to replace the existing bluestone screenings throughout the park. So where we are with that right now is, we all kind of put our heads together and decided, and this is all being funded by C P F. because they're allowed to do accessible paths on C P F. properties. Is to hire an engineering firm to do a survey of the property and a design for the pathways, because we're considering a couple of different design elements, which may be stamped concrete or permeable pavers. Permeable pavers are about twice the cost, so we're seeing if maybe we could do some budget engineering and do that in portions of the pathway that need additional drainage. But we, we feel at this point, we kind of need somebody to do a topographic survey and see where the water is running and the best way to address that, because it's a lot of money.
Yeah, you don't need permeable pavers for the whole thing.
Right, and so that's kind of where we're at, and so we feel like, even though we'll spend some money getting an engineer in place, it'll be designed in a way that will probably ultimately save us money than just going in and doing the whole thing with permeable pavers, for example. So we want to get it right, because the drainage in that park has not ever been correct, and there's a lot of very damp areas. Everything runs down towards the band shell at this point, so we want to, we're going to go in, we want to do it right and correct everything, so.
Jackie also said there's a potential of doing a water quality project there with some rain gardens and addressing some of the drainage issues.
Which, based on how this ends up coming back, we may be able to incorporate, you know, into, yeah. So I know that we've been working on a scope of work for that too, to just go out to get a, it doesn't have to be like a major plan, hopefully, so it should be fairly quick.
It's not going to be too costly to do that, I mean, it's really just so that they can-
With the investment being made, it's worth it.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
So at this point, playground should be in in the spring. Pathway should be, we don't want to rip up the whole park during the summer, so pathway should be done in the fall.
So the playground in the spring and the pathway in the fall?
Yes, which it needs sense to do the playground first anyway, because then we'd have to be driving over all of those elements to get into that corner, so. So that's our timelines there. Foxer Bob Golf Course, we put out scope of work, we received back nine proposals, we reviewed all the proposals, we have a recommendation for who we would like to go forth with, which we'll be forwarding for Ward, and we'll send you some information on that.
Do we have to lift the structure?
Well, in, in going out to these consultants and getting back their ideas on things, and then Daryl did a very thorough job of calling back a few of the top people who we were looking at and really discussing the project with them. Some of them felt that potentially just one of the walls in the basement could be repaired and not a lifting of the whole building. So there were some different thoughts as to how to approach fixing the building. So it may not require a lifting based on, which, yeah, which, once they go in and really assess it, I mean, this is based on a walkthrough. They did a visual inspection, you know, in a walkthrough, so once they really get in, once they're on hired, they'll be able to give us a little bit more in depth, but that's what we're hoping for at this point.
Wait, what are you saying, we got the, we went out to bid and we got nine?
We went off of the master professional service list that the town now has, and we put out the scope of services to, what, like a dozen firms?
We went to the whole list.
And how do you know this, so what you're saying is the scope of services includes lifting, but it might not, we might not have to do it, so it'd be less expensive than we are getting the bids?
Well, when we put out the scope of services, we didn't like specifically say like, you know, lift the building, we said that, you know, the foundation needs to be repaired. So then we had a walkthrough back in February, it was February fifth. We had a lot of people there, I mean, it was probably twenty or so different consultants representing most of the companies that we sent out the scope to, came through the building. And, you know, and then basically in reaching out to them, like, you know, with what they had proposed back to us, you know, my, my goal was to find out what their actual design approach was going to be. And most of them came back and were like, well, we can probably not lift the entire building. So just to go back to where that idea of lifting the building came from, that was an idea that came from L K M A. when they did their building assessment back in November of twenty-three. And that was what they were- Were we in contract with them to do that work? Yes, we were in contract with them to do that work, so they came out and they did a full building assessment. And they kind of had the idea that like if you want to repair the foundation, you should lift the building. It was, so was it should, it wasn't must? It was not a must, exactly, it was not a must, so, and I, I think what was good coming out of us going out to all these different companies to ask them what their approach would be, was that basically we found out that most of them said, don't do that. Like they said, it's kind of crazy that you would lift an entire building up to rip out the foundation from underneath it. They said, you know, basically, we feel that you could just repair the issues that the foundation has, whether it was through removing portions of the foundation or using buttresses, which is where they like try to reinforce it with a perpendicular member that's poured up against the foundation wall. So that was kind of what the approach that we were hearing back from these companies that provided us with proposals, was that they were saying, you probably don't have to do this, you know, so.
Which is actually, wouldn't be in their financial interest to not do it, so the fact that they're saying that it's a possibility is good.
Right, exactly, yeah, I mean, most, most of the companies, you know, I mean, yeah, if you had to design a whole new foundation and a, and a plan for lifting a building, the cost of the engineering portion of it just goes up. So it was kind of refreshing to see that these companies, they came in and they were, you know, they're very respectable companies, came in, and they were saying, no, we don't think you have to do this, we think you can just repair what's damaged and not working and what's, you know, failing and make the building look nice and, you know, get another fifteen to twenty years out of it. So I mean, that's, I think that's the goal here, is, you know. And I think the community is much happier with that approach, because the building has an intrinsic value there. I think it's, you know, it's characteristic of the community. I knew speaking with the village, the village of Sagaponic, they, they want to see it kind of stay the way it is, you know, so.
Yeah, I wasn't talking about that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I got a little angry.
No, I just wanted to see some of the bidders, did some of the bidders put in anticipation of having to lift and others didn't, so then the low bid goes to the guy who said he didn't have to, and then he asked if he would change order and charge more?
Yeah.
But I guess we wouldn't know that right now.
I mean.
Or did they all submit based on?
Nobody really in their proposal said like, we're going to lift the building. I think, you know, the, the idea could always be there that, you know, they could come back. And, and to your point, even the companies that, that were the low bidders, one of them I actually, one of actually the one that we're going into, we're thinking about, you know, going into contract with, they said that they would include a full foundation replacement plan in their number, if that, if we had to go to that extent. But again, their, their expertise was saying, you don't have to go to this extent, so, you know, we can, we don't have to go to that level of-
Yeah, well, let's hope that's the case, that would be great, right?
That's what we're hoping, we're hoping that, you know, because that, that helps us out too, because then potentially we don't even have to take the licensees out of the building, because that was also a big factor of this project, was making the restaurant vacate premises by the end of this year. And relocating the pro shop operation to a temporary trailer location somewhere on the property. So if we can try to avoid that by just kind of keeping the building there, shoring it up and repairing the foundation, I think it's, it's going to be a good value engineering, you know, concept to keep. More, more money going into the project to actually fix the building, you know. More, more money going into the project and to actually fix the building, you know, so.
And we're also in progress with the, um, IA sanitary system there, but we, we have Rainor Group on contract. Um, they started the process, but we kind of told them to timeout a second while we figured out exactly what this building renovation was looking like in case that altered the IA system location or parameters or anything like that. So, we're hoping, you know, once we get this firm going, that we could go back to them and say, okay, like, proceed.
Yeah.
But we, we didn't want them to go in and have something designed and then this other firm say, that's not gonna work with what we need to do.
That would be putting in for CPF, our quality for the IA system?
We received a grant for that and that's who it's funded through.
Oh, we already have that?
Yes.
Yeah.
So we were hoping to get that completed now, but given that we're a little unsure of what the renovation might look like at this point, we just told them, hang on a minute, pump the brakes.
Yeah, yeah, we basically just said, just pause for, you know, two to three weeks. Um, and then once we know that we have a consultant on board to do the design work for the building, um, essentially, we put them in touch with each other, and we say, okay, now you discuss the approach and the concept of how you're gonna make all this work. Is the building getting bigger? Are we making more, um, fixtures in the bathrooms, um, which I don't think is gonna be the case. I think it's gonna relatively stay the same size and shape. So, um, you know, now, once we have that, then they can move forward with the, um, IA system design and get the permitting process for that started.
Oh, is the grant just for the design, or is it for the actual installation also?
It's for the whole thing, it's for design, installation, um, yeah, it was two hundred and seventy-six thousand, it was awarded to us.
That's good too.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, Spionk Park, um, we, we had discussed last year, um, if you recall, like in our five-five-five plan, that this was something, you know, that we were gonna look to be pursuing, um, in twenty-six or potentially even twenty-seven, but because we have budget right now in the amount of one point eight-nine, but to even get a first phase, um, completed, we're looking at about four million dollars. So, there wasn't really anything we could start right now. Um, but that's something we should, you know, revisit and go back to. Right now, we've just been kind of now concentrating on the other projects at hand, but we.
I think it makes sense to fix what we have already before we thought of something new.
So, um, we haven't, you know, we presented what we thought a first phase would look like, a cost associated with that. It was decided that wasn't gonna be funded, um, for at least twenty-five, so we will have to look at that again.
Remember that being in the budget request, actually.
No, we didn't.
Okay.
Um, when we met with you guys, when we presented the five-five-five plan, we actually, I, I think we all agreed that we were gonna put it off to twenty-six before we even put a request in.
Right, we had like put Tiana Beach, um, Pavilion in the future, so.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so we all understood it, what it'd be this year, but yeah.
What is going on with Tiana? Is it, are we getting, I mean, somebody, did we hire someone to evaluate and give us some?
Last spring we did, um, we had an evaluation and we had worked on it that time, um, to make it safe. We had to have some, um, new decking and, and yeah, if you recall. Um, so right now, the, you know, at that time, they said that should last us, um, at least three years, potentially up to five years. That's where we're at right now.
But we need to hire someone to evaluate how to do the.
Oh, yeah, well, we would need, we would need to figure out what we want to do there, period. Um, if we want to renovate what's there, if we want to tear down and rebuild, um, that's gonna be a big undertaking.
So I think, um, going back to our, our plan that we presented to you guys last year, um, was that we were going to ask for funding to actually do a design, you know, um, you know, plan in this budget year coming up, so like in July, we would request, like, we'll call it the first portion of the Tiana Beach funding. And what that would cover basically is to go out to a, you know, engineering firm, get a, do an evaluation, get a design for a new building, because I, I'm assuming where there's really no way to keep the existing building. But, you know, I think maybe through that process, if they say, oh, you know, you know, we can make it work, because I think when we did, um, Ponquod Beach, they actually did keep a lot of the understructure intact, right, so.
Yeah, um, we did have to, have to replace some pilings and things like that, and it was taken down to the studs, but that infrastructure was in much better shape than Pon- uh, Tiana's infrastructure, under the deck. Um, just, I think simply because its proximity to the water compared to Ponquod gets a lot, a lot more water going under it. Um, so, yeah, uh, it's, it's going to be, um, it's going to be costly, you know, whichever approach we take. Ponquod was a three-point-two-million-dollar renovation, and that was around seven or eight years ago. So, um, renovation or rebuild, I think we're looking at. Yeah, I think that would be fair, yeah.
It might even, if you're gonna build it and stuff from scratch, move it back.
Yeah, yeah, we have to think about that as a possibility.
Put a lot of money to it.
Yeah.
Move it back a few feet.
Those are all the things that'll have to be considered.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you do have the FIM plan coming in, that's supposed to put a ton of sand in front of it, but.
And that they're supposed to maintain and go forward.
Yeah, so, but those are all things that will have to be taken into consideration.
Yeah, so we'll budget, you know, next year, someone to come and evaluate your options, yeah.
Um, yeah, exactly.
Um, and then, oh, the, um, well, we list as municipal works because the budget is actually listed under them, but we've been managing the projects. Um, so Shinnecock Maritime Fitness Path, um, we're waiting on the final approval from the county for the CDBG funding allocation for moving it from Good Ground to the, um, Shinnecock Maritime Park.
That's by you, right?
Yes, yeah, because they wanted some additional documentation, so we've been working with them on that. But we have a design, we have.
In your packets, the conceptual design.
We have price, we have vendors in place, so we're ready to go as soon as they CDBG gives us the green light, because.
I have a question, it's probably way too like, too late, um, but a couple people I asked may, if there's any room where you could put a dog park in the middle.
Uh, um, well, that depends if we wanted to have a dog park.
Talking about putting and fencing and obstructing the view, which is, which is Bill, why we pushed all this equipment to the outside so that you would still have that view.
I don't think it's the spot for a dog park, um.
How, how big of a spot, like, would you need for that, like?
I have no idea. I mean. Also, consider a dog park up in, up in probably the old school, girl scout camp too.
And there will be one on Old Country Road in Quayog.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's more convenient for the people that are interested.
I just, I, I love that, like, they did so much work with this to push everything to the perimeter to keep that great water.
I said, I would ask.
We can look at it, I mean, I'll certainly try to see if we can fit it, I mean, there are some landscaped areas that we could maybe rework a little bit.
Yeah.
The grayed out areas don't indicate that that's pavement, that's just to highlight around the feature. So the, the actual like rectangular little bumps is what would be, um, the surface area where the equipment would go and actually does safety tile under it, um, it's a requirement. And then the path itself is, um, a concrete material.
Yes, and we have it at, um, we have it at a sixth of a mile, so if you walk that path six times in a full circle. What was that?
It'd be a mile.
Yeah, it would be a mile, exactly, yeah, so you, so I, part of my goal was to try to keep it so that, you know, so we could put a sign up that says like, walk this path six times, and, you know, you get to the mile, and then, you know, so it kind of adds to the whole fitness thing that people are building up to something as they go around.
And I know, I know that one of the engineers had mentioned parkour, this is not, this is so far from parkour. This is, I, I worked with Patty Tizulu on this, and I'll thank her, like, we actually went, and this is all, most, almost all of the, I think all of the equipment is accessible.
Mm-hmm.
Either, 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 um, like, there's hand bikes, and then there's, you know, there's a lot of equipment in here that is very accessible. You can access some of the equipment in a wheelchair without even getting out of the wheelchair. Um, she went through with me and we picked out, because she is a fitness instructor, we picked out pieces of equipment that would work different portions of the body, um, and she is so excited about this, that we've been, I've been working on this for over two years now. So, to see it finally, almost there.
Yeah, and it's very like group, community-minded as well, like, some of the equipment can have four people on it at once. Um, a lot of it, you could have at least two people, yep, so.
There's a leg press where you can put four people around it and you use your body weight to push out, so it shows like, one of the, the thing that was like, it was four elderly women sitting around talking while they're doing their leg exercises. But it's, I mean, that's, it's like intergenerational, it's, it's, it's accessible, and so that's kind of what we were coming for.
That's great, what's with the future sanitary, why do you need?
We're gonna put in a restroom? We just, we just wanted, sorry, I didn't interrupt you, we just wanted to put that on this site plan in case we ever want to put a restroom facility in, so that we stay away from that field with this design. That way, if we ever want to go back and do that, we're not ripping up things that we built. So we showed also a future potential restroom off the path there, um, and then the sanitary field.
Yeah, that first rectangular building that's kind of over here by the pavilion.
Right, yeah.
Um, yeah, yep, uh.
What is this right here?
That's the covered pavilion that exists.
That's the existing pavilion, so this little area.
That's a flagpole, yeah.
Yeah, no, it's this one right, right here, Bill, this little guy right here, yeah, it's, um, that, that would be the potential location of like a two, a two, um, you know, unit bathroom.
There's currently porta-potties there, and there was a plan to eventually put a bathroom.
Right, yeah.
Yes, we, um, when we had done the parking lot, we designed for it. So there's already a pipe that runs under the parking lot, um, across to that, where that sanitary field is sketched out.
Yeah, so the, yeah, the locations for these two items were actually called out in the plan, I think, what was it, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty? They had done the planning, because we just, you know, we, we just did the renovation of the parking area and the new pavilion. Um, the plan had put like a proposed location for a bathroom and like, and then there was, um, I think Tom Horton had actually made the plan so that, uh, because the, the existing septic system is actually under the driveway here. There's actually like two manhole covers right in this area. So, um, when we did that, they actually ran a pipe through the existing sanitary system and out over here and capped it. So that if there was ever a need to build this and tie everything in for the building and for the bathroom, we wouldn't have to rip the parking lot out.
And the electrical is in as well.
And, yeah, there's actually already, the reason the bathroom is kind of like located here is because there's actually an H-frame in, in the middle of the field here, um, that's kind of hidden behind, hidden behind the tree here. And so essentially what we would do is we build the bathroom up to that H-frame and then, you know, relocate the electrical stuff onto the bathroom building.
So, yeah, we were just trying to be mindful of any potential future elements, yeah.
Is there any fencing up along the water?
No.
Is that part of the plan?
Not at this time.
This equipment is all geared towards like thirteen and over.
Yes.
It's not really a, a child playground.
And, uh, so this is a lot more than I thought it was gonna be, is there, the, what we budgeted? I know we transferred money into the account, is that sufficient to pay for it all?
Yes.
Yep, yes, we have, we have all of our estimates in and everything.
And it actually looks like more, because what you're seeing is potential future, like, the circles are all like potential future, screening trees and landscaping.
Yeah, so we had, um, what I had thought, you know, kind of come up with the plan is that at, at some point, probably in the very near future, because there actually may even be money available when this project is completed, um, to put in some trees, like deciduous trees that will, um, you know, create shade, so, and we would place them in such a way so that, um, when the sun is coming from the south, you would, you would have the shade cover, so you're working on the equipment, yeah, and it also, it, it keeps everything in the park low. You know, other than the trees, obviously, but I think, um, initially when we had looked at doing, like, it was all gonna be on one pad, there was this giant like shade structure that was gonna be erected over it, um, and it would actually have dwarfed the pavilion on the property, which is a pretty large pavilion, I mean, I'm sure you've all seen this, it's a pretty large pavilion, so I kind of like, was like, I think we should not do this. Because like now we're like, we have this beautiful pavilion and everybody loves it, and then we're gonna build this like other giant structure like next to it. It's gonna start looking like, you know, I don't know, just not.
We want to take away from like the watershed view of just being able to look across and not see these structures, you know.
So do the plantings, are those included in the?
Yeah, there's, um, yeah, so the, the budget does have some money that we can use when we're at the end of the project to purchase some trees. And again, it would probably be like a parks maintenance thing would be installing those trees, so it's another way we try to save money. When we get to the end of the project, we try to leave some of what I call the low hanging fruit for our guys to come in and do, so, so we keep them busy. Yeah.
So that is that plan, um, so that, that is the capital projects.
We have the commercial dock too.
Oh, did I? Did I forget?
One more.
Well, thank you both, Bill, and Cindy, for your work on that. Can't wait to see it come to life.
I think it's gonna.
I'm excited.
Our, our.
Their staff is actually excited.
Yeah, our office workers are all excited, they're like, ooh, we'll get to like workout on our lunch breaks.
And we're gonna run like a fitness class there, and I want to like reach out to senior services, so that maybe they could shuttle seniors over, so do it, yeah, so.
Very nice.
Yeah.
Senior luncheon picnic.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Put out the bathrooms.
Yeah. The porta potty is pretty well utilized at that facility, so, um, a lot of it is people just driving and using the porta potty and driving out.
Yeah.
But, um, but we'll see, yeah, that could be down the road.
Almost like a little bit of a rest stop first thing in the morning, you have contractors coming in, it's like, once they find out there's a porta potty there, they're like, oh, you know.
A big parking lot they can turn around.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, anywhere we have a public bathroom, if it comes, yeah, a hotspot. Um, okay, Shinnecock Commercial Dock, uh, we received estimates from South Shore Docks to rebuild the dock fender system. Um, so we're hoping to start that ASAP, but summer was the time that the tenants at the dock indicated would work best for them and their fishing schedules. So, um, we're just coordinating with Ron Barnish, who's from South Shore Docks, for him to come in and do that work at that point, um.
Also, just, um, so the board knows, the, um, the reason it's South Shore Docks is because they actually won a bid that we put out uh, for marine construction services in twenty twenty-four, so they have a requirements contract with us to do this, this work, so.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, it's good, it is good work.
Yeah, and while we're speaking about South Shore Docks, um, this wasn't in our budget because this was something that came up over the winter, during one of the winter storms, the, um, dock platform at the south side of the old Ponquod, uh, bridge in Ed Warner Marine Park, um, where we have, it's some pilings and a dock where the people from, who want their boats from the boat ramp get on and off the boats, um, it got destroyed, um, during the winter storms. And one of the pilings had gone missing prior to that. So, we do have a reserve account for the old Ponquod Bridge that is funded by permits that we sell for that location. There is funding in that account right now, so I was hoping to move forth with Ron. We got pricing from him to install, um, new pilings and put in a whole new dock platform, um, that would, you know, be a lot more stable and, um, secure than what's been there. And, you know, last through these storms, because there's a lot of wave action and tidal action in that location.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, I will be requesting, uh, of you guys if you would allocate money from that reserve account into a project so that we can move forth with that work.
Let's have it used here.
Yeah.
Can you get it done before the season?
Uh, yeah, I think, yeah, he definitely, yeah, but I mean, he's ready to move. Yeah, I guess so.
We, we've just been, we've just been, um, finalizing some of his contract paperwork, because he does have a requirements contract, but the way he presented his proposals weren't really, um, in the form of that. So we're just refining that paperwork with him right now, and then we'll be ready to move forth. Um, but I will, uh, I assume that we'll have to create a project for that, and then you guys will have to do a resolution to fund it, so that might take a few weeks.
Yeah, what you're saying is a park reserve fund, that parks reserve fund that we could pull from?
Yes, yeah, and I confirm that there's more than enough budget in it, um, for what we would need here.
Oh, good. What, uh, have you heard anything from Aaron about the Tiana Bay side, the Gabian? I know he was looking at that with us, and that was.
Other than.
A year later.
Yeah, I've been kind of sending those like updated emails every now and again, um, just because I've been going down and taking pictures since they put the dredge sand there from the, um, intercoastal project. He had reached out to FIM with the, um, revised proposal for the breakwater system. What's happened since then, I'm not sure, but I've been trying to document down there just to show, like, see, your initial project, which called for placing sand on that beach, just sand, well, they just put all this sand there, and it's already eroding away. So I think it's a good. So I think it's a good example of that sand alone isn't gonna solve the issue there. For half of the facility that has sand on it, still, it shouldn't be an issue. Um, and from what I'm told, they, they will probably know enough to migrate over to that area to get back into the water. But it may still be an issue this year with them getting stuck behind Gabians.
When you said he reached out to the Army Corps, did he put it in writing, do you know?
Yeah, he sent them an email with the, um, proposed plans that he had presented during the work session.
We don't know if he heard back.
Um, they had responded that they would run it up the chain. I don't know, you know, if there's been any movements since.
You might actually want to see if Aaron wants to come in and talk about that and also the ECDs, what's, you know, the up, an update on that.
Yeah, and just in general, if he could, um, speak to like how the beaches are looking for the season too.
State.
Yeah, um, just because I, I, I keep, you know, getting a little nervous about Pon Quog. It was very narrow last year. Um, that's, you know, our main beach location in terms of, uh, usage and revenues. And there is a very limited beach there last year, so.
Ryan Murphy and I, as a note on that topic, did reach out to the county. Um, to my knowledge, neither one of us has heard back, um, about stockpiling sand. Um, because we had our meeting with the Shinnecaw Dock Committee. They're concerned too. Because now with the bridge being compromised, there's no way to get trucks over there in the potential scenario that we have. A washout or a breach and the stockpiles over there are extremely low. And so Ryan and I reached out to the county asking, you know, while there's these dredges in the area for the ECDs. Would it be possible for the county to help us out with, you know, getting them to stockpile more sand for that area? Because the, the stockpile is very low. We haven't heard back, so just keep reaching out.
Yeah. The beach was looking, uh, promising compared to last summer, uh, you know, and the few times that we've inspected it, um, periodically. It did look like the sand was building up at least, um, it hadn't really built out yet. So I know we're happy, we had some south winds this week, um, we gain sand with that sometimes. Typically, we know by April how we're really looking, so fingers crossed. So any questions on the capital projects?
No, I think that's great. That's just what we were looking for.
And I would just say, I appreciate, uh, your department's focus on the ADA enhancements at North Sea and Red Creek. And the elements that you're, uh, putting into the fitness path. Uh, if, if you would like to, uh, come and attend one of our disability task force meetings to just review some of those things. I'm sure they'd be very pleased about all those different additions because I know that's a big, um, you know, issue for them and.
You could actually have Patty speak to it because she has helped design it and she helped pick out all the equipment, so.
Um, and all of it, North Sea as well and Red Creek. It would be great to, it's wonderful.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't mind attending.
Yeah.
It's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say, thank you guys. You guys do an amazing job with your capital projects.
Thank you.
You know, I mean, keep us informed, they're on time, you know, you have great oversight and, you know, it, it, it shows. Because, you know, you're there and you know how these facilities get used and when you see stuff going in, you're, you're able to call things out and say, you know, uh, it's not gonna work. So it's, it's really appreciated that you are so involved in these projects and, you know, I really appreciate what you do.
Was that garbage truck packer for you?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
That's good.
Yes, ma'am. It'll be going over the West Hampton Bridge, just something I should mention that, you know, we will have some. I'm very happy that the bridge is open, but we will be a little hamstrung, um, in getting some of our vehicles, uh, to Dune Road. So things like the garbage truck being a prime example. And we empty garbage, um, seven days a week.
Yeah.
At the beaches, twice on the weekends during the season. So it's not gonna be the most efficient, uh, situation.
Have we heard any further from leadership officers?
What's that?
Any, any further news from the county at all, leadership officers?
No, I mean, I think I know as much as the public basically knows, which is, you know, they have the barricades up, um. On the west side and two lanes open right now, but just the five ton limit. And no indication of one that may, may go on until so. We're just kind of preparing as if it's gonna be the whole summer. Um, and then I just wanted to update you quickly on a couple of other things. Um, we have ongoing recreation programs and registration. Beach permits will go on sale by the end of this month. We have a new, uh, recreation software that we're in the process of building. Because we have to put in all the data, all the classes, all the facilities, um, get trained on it. Get our staff trained on it, so it's a big undertaking. It's called Vermont Systems. Um, so I just want to say publicly, um, people may be getting emails to their account. It's not junk. It's not spam. We're actually asking you to create a new, um, password for a new system. Um, so I just wanted to put that out there.
We're not going to LPRs or are we, are we transitioning in some respects?
We are still using, uh, for the beach permits, we are still, uh, using the, the TCOs have LPRs, um, on their vehicles. So it's still a hybrid system. Uh, we're still issuing physical permits, but the license plates go into the database. Um, so they could scan that way too, but since we do sell permits at the beaches, those license plates don't necessarily get into the system. Or at least not immediately, but also we sell daily permits in a lot of the locations through the license plates. So they go in and scan for those as well.
Okay.
Those definitely go into the system. So it's still a hybrid. We would love to, you know, eventually.
I feel like people collect them.
I think even if we went fully electronic, we would still be issuing physical permits, just because people like them.
They like to have like seven on their car.
Yeah.
More.
Oh, we, we, we actually take pictures if we see somebody with like twenty because we like to see what colors we've used. Yeah, in prior years so that it's not too similar.
Can I ask what this year's color?
Oh, my gosh.
It's great this year.
Is it gray like?
Oh, no, really?
I think it's like, uh, it's like one of those like, um, you know, like matte type gray colors, you know, like, like, you know, uh, like the new Vogue color for vehicles.
We look at so many colors and then, yeah, it changes and we have different colors for resident, non-resident marine parks, so like.
All good.
But I'll believe Daryl and say gray, yeah.
I, I only know this because Gina was showing me the new website and she said that the color, uh, the, the, the colors that we picked for. Because like, I guess with the new Vermont Systems, we can actually pick like a different color.
Oh, on the banner on the website, yeah.
And it was gray and she said that's the color of the new permits this year.
We were gonna match it with the permits, that's right, that's right, yeah.
That's the only reason I know that.
Yeah.
And how's all the signed replacements going that we talked about?
Well, the town attorney's office is in the midst of drafting those code amendments. So we haven't actually gone to print on the signs, um.
We should get moving on that as soon as possible.
I.
Not you.
Yeah, no, no, no. Well, it's also like, I guess I just wanted to make sure that they got adopted. Um, but I'm actually meeting with the highway department tomorrow to go over the project, so.
I mean, we were unanimous in favor.
Okay, and the trustees were as well.
Yes.
So I, I have been moving forth, um.
I don't know, were you asking or telling us about the trustees? Because I don't know if they.
No, they have, they have, they've, 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 um, sent me an email of support and I also attended their work session this past Monday and they all gave me their support. Yeah, yeah, so, so, uh, so anyway, yeah, so I'm meeting with highway tomorrow to go through the project and what the needs are. But I've already sent them preliminary numbers and, and all that stuff, so. Um, in April, we have an Easter egg hunt at Good Ground Park, um, that we're partnering with the Hampton Beach Chamber of Commerce on. That's going to be from ten thirty to twelve thirty, have a DJ, an Easter bunny, face painting, food truck. So that's always a nice event.
You have a date on that already?
April fifth, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, April is also National Pickle Bowl Month, so we're partnering with USA Pickle Bowl, told multiple events throughout the month of April. So there'll be, um, socials, round robins, clinics, fam, a family feud tournament. That tournament will be on April twenty-sixth.
Who's hosting?
We are.
Ah, no, but like who's the host of the family feud tournament?
Oh, uh, I don't know. I don't know if we've designated anybody for that, maybe. You're welcome to.
Maybe, I would consider.
All right, all right. Come on down. I'll, I'll let you know what, you know, what's, like what we're planning to do. But that's April twenty-sixth, if you want to pencil it on your calendar.
Is that supposed to be a game show pun?
At ten AM, come on down. Ten AM and it's for ages twelve and up. Um, we are getting the summer brochure ready, given that we're in a new, we're in between two rec software programs right now. Um, we don't have it published yet, but that will be out in this month as well. Um, Good Ground Park, we have our concert series all lined up and booked. So the first concert will be on June thirtieth at Pon Quog Beach, which we almost had to cancel, but we're gonna keep it on.
Yeah.
At six PM and it's the Just Sixties Band, so.
And then can you also please make sure you get the signs this year for the East Quog Concert Series as well?
Yes.
You did that sign last year, right?
We have done them in years past, yes. Sometimes they don't reach out to us, so.
I'll make sure they do, because they were upset like last year because the Good Ground Park concert schedule was at the East Quog Village Green.
Yeah.
The East Quog Village Green Concert Series wasn't there.
But what would happen historically is they would reach out with their lineup and then I would have a sign made and we would put it up.
I'll ask them.
But yeah, that, that didn't happen for whatever reason, so, um, yeah, we're, we're always happy to do that.
Well, thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. All right.
Keep up the good work. Let us know if you need anything to get all these projects done, but it sounds like we're in really good shape.
Yeah, sometimes we, we're also just challenged by, you know, the time it might take to get contracts or permits and things like that. So sometimes, uh, that holds us up our timelines.
And if that happens, you just let us know too, because, you know, potentially we can try to help speed things up.
If we can connect, especially Daryl, I know you worked on this last year with Tommy John. I'm not sure what the Noax Civic is gonna want to do with respect to the Trout Pond.
Right, and I was, I am gonna email them back because they, you're on that email as well, I think, too. Yeah, I was gonna email them with the updates.
What's that?
That's the invasive plant in, um, Trout Pond, yeah.
Yeah, I, I talked to them this year and they just weren't sure what, what they were gonna do. So if, if, um, we could just connect at some point.
What month does that usually happen?
We usually do, you have to wait for it to start growing.
Yeah, um, so the growing cycle for the, the, the carolina kabamba.
You know a lot about it.
I do, I know. I researched it. I, I feel like I've become an expert just on that plant.
And the milfoil, yes.
And the milfoil, yes. Um, so typically, I mean, it typically, even though it's an aquatic plant. It typically follows the same growing cycle as regular, like, you know, terrestrial plants. So like in like May and June, it starts to put up like, um, flowers.
Yeah.
So you can actually get like an actual flower on the plant and then from the flower, it can shoot out seeds. Um, those seeds can then embed themselves in the muds and or the muck of the, the basin of the pond there. Um, so those seeds can actually be viable for up to three years if they don't like spawn immediately and make a plant. Um, so we try, like, we've been trying to attack it in a spring. Um, and then we also try to do it like late in the fall, like maybe like, um, you know, October time. We've done that, that's like how we've been doing with Tommy John was, you know, springtime, we try to do it.
Before the seeds drop.
Exactly. So the goal is to try to get the plant like before it actually makes a flower and then produces more seeds, which then create more plants. Um, and then same thing at the end of the season is to try to just get as much of the plant out of the water as possible at the end of the season. So that it even, you know, it stymizes it even further going into the new growing season.
Have you made it, has it made you feel like you've made it dead?
A couple of concerns with all of this is, we were concentrating on the area around the, um, sun deck. Because that's where people typically sit. I mean, the whole pond is basically invaded with, with the kabamba. So, and, and milfoil as well.
Right.
Um, so we were concentrating in those areas. But one of the issues is that unless you get every little fragment that is breaking off of these plants as you're raking it out. Then those fragments are just gonna proliferate again.
Right.
So you may be actually worsening the issue.
Right.
Michael remembers from our last, uh, experience, you were there, you, um, I think you were new to the board, you had come to our, that one we did, what was it, last fall, I think it was?
Which, for what?
For the kabamba, for the.
It was fall?
I think.
Might have been late summer.
I think it was, because it was.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah.
A little chilly. I wear shorts, but.
But, uh, if you remember, we had those, um, the pool skimming nets.
Yeah.
And I kept telling everybody, I'm like, we gotta make sure we keep the fragments, no fragmentation. It's not easy.
People went in the water to try it out, like people jumped in the water.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, but the littlest.
Have we ever reached out to an actual, I know you're an expert, but an actual expert to ask like, are we doing more harm than good? What's a better?
We have actually, um, we reached out to Cornell and, um, invasive plants association.
And they were like, oh, tell us how you do, because we, uh.
Yeah, right, right, that was.
They're like, that sounds like a good plan, like let us know how it goes. Um, but they've drained down like the Carmen's River and stuff like that for this and it's come back.
Maybe we should get a recommendation from like, you know.
Yeah, I mean, the only.
Are we, are we, are we just fighting a losing battle?
Well, I mean, I.
I think so, unfortunately.
I think what we have to, yeah, well, we could, I mean, we could reach out to, I mean, I'm more than happy to reach out to other people, you know, other experts to do it. Um, I mean, because I'm, I'm just, I did a lot of the research myself, so I'm not necessarily an expert, but I just did a lot of research and understanding of the plant itself. Um, but, you know, one of the things that, that came out of this was like, you know, you could be more aggressive at tack, at, at, you know, tackling the problem. Which like would involve mechanical harvesters.
Or herbicides.
Or, yeah.
East Hampton uses a mechanical.
They do in, um, what's that?
Georgia Pond?
Georgia Pond, but that's funded by the homeowners around it and it's very expensive to do.
They also drained Georgia, didn't they?
And it doesn't eradicate the issue.
Right.
You have, you would have to do it on an ongoing basis.
Right, the other potential issue is to, is the access of getting the mechanical harvester into the water body. Which involves obviously clearing space around, you know, a certain area around the perimeter of the, of the pond. Um, you know, so, you know, again, it's, the question I think we have to ask ourselves is, is what is the expectation? You know, is it, um, you know, and Kristen will point this out, that it's, it's technically not, um, a, a place where we're supposed to swim. Um, I mean, it's, it's an unprotected waterfront. We do have posted, uh, posted signage there that indicates that. Um, but, you know, I guess.
Yeah, well, when I was kids, we'd do the rope swing.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, Tommy John would, would mention that when we would do these events, he would go, oh, the rope swing is right over there, like on the other side of the.
Let's reconvene and talk about it, maybe a, a meeting with the, the civic council might be a good idea. Just to kind of get where they're at with it and maybe inform them of some, um, perspectives that you're receiving from some experts.
Yeah, and I think, yeah, we've, we've, I think they generally understand, but of course they want.
Yeah, but it is an expense, right? We're, we're taking a lot of, we're using workers to transport it.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, is it potential like with Mil Pond, like where we have water quality funds to potentially clean up, you know, help?
Maybe.
Do a project or investigate this or?
Um, so what was actually, um, interesting, we actually had looked at a grant, um, that the New York State Department of Parks, I think it was, was putting out there. Um, and the grant only covered, um, engineering costs associated with coming up with a plan, basically, to remove it. So it was like, you know, like even, you know, like we were like, okay, well that, right.
But then maybe if you could have the grant to get that, then we could do a grant.
Yeah.
Wait, are you talking about Tra- no pond now?
No, no.
Trout Pond.
What, what's the grant?
Oh, it, it was a grant that I believe was through the New York State Parks Department and it was basically. Yeah, it was one of the two, one of the two organizations and it was, we had looked at, I, I did, like I read the documents. I read all the, you know, the forms and everything and it was literally only for funding a like design. Or like a, um, like a mitigation plan to deal with the problem. It didn't actually fund the actual removal or the actual mitigation steps that you would take.
You could, because the, I think it's a water quality, um, with, they're planning for water quality to put a fish ladder up in there.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you might be able to do that the same, somehow the same way.
That might be a good idea. You should look into that.
Yeah.
I mean, I think, yeah, we would have to hire somebody to evaluate it and give recommendations and then.
Right.
Because you want to put a new culvert underneath the road and at the same time for the fish ladder, because the culvert's pretty bad there.
Yeah.
That dam is going to need to be redone as well or, or.
That's what the, it's all in the plan to do that.
Is that under highway?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, he's, he's, he's like sitting there going like this, call me up here.
Oh.
You can come up, Charles.
Yeah, wait my turn.
Um, yeah, I mean, we can certainly look at it. Um, the only thing I would be worried about, I'm not worried about, but that I would say is a potential caution for this. Is that I don't know if there's actually a water quality issue there, like where the actual water has like too many ni- too much nitrogen. Or phosphorus or, you know, any of those like materials. Um, actually, what, interestingly enough, uh, at one of our first pond cleaning events that we had, um, follow up to that. Uh, one of our. Um actually, what interestingly enough, uh at one of our first pond cleaning events that we had, um follow up to that, uh one of our constituents one of the constituents had had um sent this like picture to me of this like kind of gelatinous looking thing that was on the deck that she had pulled out of the water. And she asked me like, what is this, is this like part of the kabamba, like, so you know, me not necessarily knowing what it was, I started doing some research. Um and I found out that it was actually a bryozoan mass, which is actually a good sign for water quality, because it's actually like a a cluster of um like tiny little like basically scrubbers, and those scrubbers can only exist in very clean water bodies.
Interesting.
So when I had done this research and I was like, oh, that's what this must be, and then there's more pictures, and I was like, this is what it is, and um it it actually was a good sign that the water is not impacted by.
So we have to gather facts.
I was gonna say, we would have a really, I I feel like in that particular location, we would have a really hard time establishing it as being like a water quality, you know, impaired water body, you know what I'm saying?
Affecting like fish and turtles and things like that.
Right, right. Uh correct, that's kind of, yeah.
If you tie it into the other wildlife.
Yeah, I mean, it does, and to your point, Bill, it does affect, it does affect wildlife, because it does create a habitat that.
Cause if they get, if they're trying to get L Y's back up in there, that L Y's, that might discourage the L Y's.
So yeah, it might, yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, that's a good point, um but I think, yeah, I think, I think where, I think where we're going is we do need to maybe get somebody who knows more about the entire picture of what's going on there to come in and say, doing this.
Right.
This is the result, doing this, this is the result, so um you know, again, I'm I'm not an expert, I just rely on my my ability to find good answers to problems.
Yeah, I know, you're very good, thank you.
Um but uh you know, I I would definitely say we should bring in an expert in to, if we wanna go further with that project, and really define, you know, what our goals are, what the problems are that we may have there.
But what's with no pond?
That is not under our purview.
Give her a break.
Thank you for coming in, this has been a great presentation.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
See you soon.
All right.
Last but not least.
Next up is the proposed yellow light pilot program with our Town Superintendent of Highways, Charles McCarthy.
Hi.
Hi.
The Highway Department.
Girl by yourself.
And also the co-chair of the Traffic Mitigation Committee.
Exactly, you should be listed as such.
Welcome to members of the committee right here in front of me.
And your deputy's um Superintendent of Highways could text me and say, he wants to know that.
He's watching out for me?
He's doing a good job while you're sitting here.
Um so as everybody knows, we have the same exact complaints that we get thousands of in the morning, as in the afternoon. So I proposed a two-week uh trial pilot program to change some lanes, blink some lights in the westbound direction. The goal uh is to flush out the areas of Southampton Village and to flush out the areas of Sabonic Road and north of thirty-nine off Shrum- uh off Sandy Hollow. Uh it's a radical plan, uh to say the least, but it's a plan, it's a it's an attempt. Something that we can show the community that at least we are trying something. Disappointed, to say the least, with the county's million-dollar study, and at the end of the day, they said, you know, kinda live with it. I had a meeting with the uh Mayor of Southampton Village and the Mayor of East Hampton Village, we went up to see Ed Romaine in his office and uh some people from their Department of Transportation, there were thoughts about possibilities of the um long-term of the power lines uh off North Sea to get get further east. Uh they clearly have no idea about the power of the North Sea associations that exist right now.
It's pretty hilly there, too.
So anyway, this is a short-term pilot program, and I'd like to get into it with everybody. I met uh on more than one occasion with the Mayor of Southampton Village, who is clearly super on board with this. His village gets destroyed, uh some of the the data that Tom Neely came up with proved that where you have the the number of cars going uh east in the morning on thirty-nine and Montauk Highway. And then the volume coming west, how they change and run through the village. Thousands and thousands of cars make that decision. Uh so he's on board, as I spoke to, and so. So ideally, I I explained what the goal is, the goal is to have everybody stay on thirty-nine. And for the most part, thirty-nine doesn't stop from uh North Sea Road to twenty-seven.
So the light would be shut off.
Not all, the college light, we we, uh from experience from doing this before, you need at least two north and south transverse. The college would be one of them, got a lot of feedback, I'm gonna say feedback, pushback from the nation about, hey, they don't wanna be interrupted going north and south. Uh I get it, so the college would stay open, but I would ask Jimmy Kieran to have a police officer there, so if there are no cars, they can open it up to send people westbound, uh if there's no reason to stop. Um the other north and south would be North Sea Road, you know, by uh Seven Eleven there and and McDonald's, you'd be able to go north and south there without a problem, but from there in between, the goal is gonna be to keep them moving. Now, when I tell people that I wanna reduce it from two lanes to one lane, you know, the eyes fly. You know, I get a lot of people rolling their eyes at me, but anyone that's been here long enough remembers that once thirty-nine going uh westbound was one lane, east of Sandy Hollow, and Sandy Hollow was one lane coming out of Sandy Hollow, it was, the light was always green. Both of those areas did not stop, you you, I know you take uh St. Andrews to come out, but anyone that travels uh w- west in in the afternoon knows that from Burger King to the college, it's not moving. So from Burger King, we're gonna make it one lane, traveling west, from Burger King to Sandy Hollow.
You're gonna leave it one lane, it's not gonna, why, you're not just gonna, you're not gonna open it up to two.
So right now, it's two lanes, thirty-nine from North Sea Road to Sandy Hollow is two lanes. Right after Burger King, we're gonna force everybody into one lane.
Don't we're talking about AM or PM?
PM, it's a whole PM.
Can I just ask you why you wouldn't just keep it one lane from all the way back?
We are.
Okay, so it's not gonna have it, it's not gonna open to two and then close to one?
No, it is, and the reason for that is it's two lanes coming out of the village, there are two turning lanes coming out of the village. I use this example, and I'm jumping, so if anybody has a question, just jump in, if you look at Flanders Road to Montauk Highway, it's two turning lanes and very quickly merges to one lane and it works, there's a little bit of a hassle, but it works. So the two turning lanes coming out of North Sea Road uh traveling north that turn to go west, we'll leave them two lanes, so the village flushes out. And then by the time they get to Burger King, that'll be the first county truck to get them to merge to what we're gonna call the express lane to twenty-seven. So they're gonna move to that left sink middle middle lane, and they're not gonna stop again to the college. Sandy Hollow will be, it it's one lane, and then when you get to the light, this is a county thing, it dumps to two lanes, so more people can go and that light turns green, that will be forced to be one lane, but doesn't stop.
Right.
And then after that, it's two lanes, so you have thirty-nine doesn't stop one lane, Sandy Hollow doesn't stop one lane, it becomes two lanes.
Now Charlie, does the does the condensing to the one lane, even though we're allowing them to flush out, um as you would say? Are we, is that, is that not counterintuitive, or how how is that managing, I guess, explain how that's managing the flow?
Yeah, how does it help to go from two lanes to one?
Because two lanes stops, one lane does not stop.
What happens if?
Being two lanes.
If you continue it to be two lanes, we cannot blink that light, because you have four lanes going into two.
Yeah.
At Sandy Hollow, the biggest, the biggest backup is Sandy Hollow and and McGee Street.
You're gonna get a lot of accidents.
You can't do it, absolutely can't do it, so you have one lane that doesn't stop, think about leaving a concert, you leave in a concert, that lane doesn't stop, you have a lot of people going, but the one lane does not stop, so Sandy Hollow will not stop, which also means nobody's gonna, if it works, people won't be cutting down Sabonic. And they won't be going in the back there, because the, you watch your your uh your GPS or your Waze, and if that traffic's moving, they'll keep you on that road.
What would happen if say I turn out, I'll make a left at Burger, you know, to go head west, and I go past Burger King, and I wanna make a right at North McGee. Can you go over, or you gotta keep on heading towards?
No, North McGee, by the time you get to McGee Street, it's it's two lanes. Right after Sandy Hollow, it becomes two lanes.
Then, and you can make a right.
Sure.
Okay. And so I'd be okay for the school, this would be after school's closing?
So uh to further my explanation, I stopped to see the superintendent at the school, we're not gonna set this up till the last bus leaves. Last bus leaves at three forty-five.
Okay.
My goal is to have all the cones set up, lights blinking at four.
Okay.
Now originally, I wanted to start the week of that school is off, do one week that school's off to master it. The second week will be in full-blown, you know, schools open and so on, but I already got feedback from the village police that a lot of their staff is off. I didn't even think, I'm sure my staff picked vacation too, and I'm sure the town PD picked vacation too, so that everyone's gonna be at the lowest staffing level as possible, so I think I'm gonna move it to the next week, so the week that everybody, so it it'll be a good good thing, because school's a big, big traffic issue, so if we have two full weeks of the school, it'll be a perfect way to do the pilot program.
And and you're gonna maintain the speed at thirty-five of whatever the speed.
Now I'm gonna tell them, do a hundred and get, get going.
Henry Road.
So Henry Road, I'm gonna have a highway, uh and again, I'll go through the post later if you want. Uh Henry Road, we're gonna have somebody on the 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 north end blocking it.
So you have to go to Sabonic and.
Right, we're gonna say local traffic only, so we're not gonna have them come out, because that's one for one when they come out of Henry Road. And again, if if it's moving, people won't be, we're hoping, as they learn, maybe the second day, the third day, or at least the end of the first.
On the issue, two weeks is like, people are just figuring out at two weeks, you're you're.
Look, the last time we did it, it was one week, and we caught a rain day, and we caught something else, and.
It's a lot of money.
To this date, we still don't have the results of the thing, and we we came up with a better solution to that with the um we're gonna use a G R code, it's called.
Q R.
Q R code through um through uh C R C is gonna help us with that, and we're gonna do a mailing, so everybody can answer a survey at the end of two weeks.
Talk about it.
Right, and they have the technology where it can barcode it, where it can set set up graphs, comments, and so on. So instead of having a manual, so to speak, uh traffic study that costs thousands and thousands of dollars.
In real time.
Let's get the community to say, hey, this worked, it didn't work.
I mean, I'm willing to try anything, because I, as somebody that did that commute every day, it's like adding insult to injury that you sit your way out and then you sit your way back, and most of the times, the way home is even worse than the way there.
It is.
Cause I feel like people stagger their times going out, but everyone's kind of coming back.
Plus you got the sun in your eyes.
Can't even get through that North Sea intersection.
Yeah. I asked the county about that too, I asked them to do a don't block the box there.
Yeah.
Because the.
We do.
So there's a, there's a couple things that I have to be ready to call an audible, meaning we're gonna change on the fly. Now, if we find out that those two lanes coming out of the village are hurting us, then we're gonna ask the village to drop that to one lane. You know, maybe the next day, so although people will be into the village a little bit further, it it may work better, again, I.
Now, are they gonna support this with officers?
They are.
Okay.
That, she was one of the calls.
I just wanna make sure, because this is gonna help them tremendously and.
I I stopped to see them yesterday, and the chief wasn't there, I spoke to a few other people, she just called me to remind me that she's gonna be short-staffed, she was asking that, you know. So I probably gonna move it past the school week, it's a true, true traffic study, everybody's in motion. We're gonna send letters to uh Robert Ross at the at the co- at the hospital to get their input, we're gonna write to the other schools, because not only the town of Southampton schools are affected, uh Sag Harbor, Pearson, East Hampton, all of those teachers are uh affected. So we wanna get a true feedback, not only from people that are right here, but everyone that that goes through. I'm hoping, and we'll put it up on the signs, you know, with the uh with the code, that even people that are town residents will be able to chime in on on the survey. Now, it's expensive.
Can you also notify the fire department, the fire district?
Yep, everybody will be notified of the, and again, let's face it, we have police at these intersections, if emergency vehicles have to jump out, the lights get stopped and so on, and it goes into motion. So just to go through it, west uh east of North Sea Road, that's gonna be reduced to one lane. No officers needed, because we're not blinking the light, we're just changing the uh the road, we'll have one highway unit assigned there after the cones is set up in case a cone gets knocked down, so that'll be one. The county, I'm hoping, I meet with them Wednesday, next Wednesday, will give us six or seven trucks to to block that one lane from Burger King going west to Sandy Hollow, so that would be them. Um and then, and again, it's easy lifting, there's, they're basically in their truck, you know, we're not asking them to be out there, it's, saves us on safety also. The trucks pull in, the road is blocked, my people aren't out there setting up cones, so there's a safe, we're blocking that, trying to reduce the safety there. Um Sandy Hollow, we're gonna use cones to bring it to one lane, there will be a police officer there in case there's a crosswalk there. So if somebody has to cross, the police officer will be there to stop the traffic and cross, we're praying, we don't get that, you know, it'd be a big delay if we have people hitting that cross, but I get it. Um there'll be one highway unit there once the cones is set up, in case a cone gets knocked down. When you get to McGee Street, even though it's after school, that is a busy, busy street for people coming out of the village trying to go west. The cop's gonna get abused there, but it's what it is, they're gonna force those people to go east. But that'll be, it'll be s- signs further in the sort of village saying, hey, no, no westbound traffic on thirty-nine, you know, make your decision here.
They'll do it one time, that's it.
Yeah, the village is gonna be upset, because it's gonna force people through the village to get on Hill Street, but the plan is to have Hill Street moved too.
Are you gonna be blinking Hill Street again?
Absolutely, blinking Hill Street at the college, blinking Hill Street at the at the reservation, and uh the village is gonna handle St. Andrews and the interior of Hill Street, I told them, I can't really explain, tell them the chief of police what I think their staff should do, but I've been there, you have to be physically in the street pulling the cars, you can't sit in your car and expect the, you ha- I I, I'm not saying put on white gloves, but as silly as it sounds, that whistle works. You whistle, you're waving them through, people don't have to stop, there's a, there's a dark bend leaving the village on Hill Street right before the reservation. Even if there's no traffic, people slow down there, so when there is traffic, it really backs up, and there's really sometimes no reason, because as soon as you clear that curve, it's open to the college, but anyway, my suggestion was somebody on that bend waving them out, somebody at the uh, we're requesting somebody at St. Andrews at the blinking light, out of their car, physically being there, and then we're gonna have to handle the college, so that will move. We're gonna monitor Canoe Place, if Canoe Place starts to back up, then we're gonna put somebody there to wave cars through that. So these are the, these are the plans, and.
So really, this is, this is, this is trying to.
This is all hands on deck.
We're looking at from the village to Hamptown Base.
Yeah.
But so is it, but my whole thing is like, okay, so here's the best case scenario, this works, and it's amazing, it's not financially feasible to maintain this.
So that's something that the board uh as a whole has to look at, and uh.
Or we'd have to look at redoing the roadways to make it happen without.
You can, you can look at redoing the roadways, you can look at the possibilities of next year, or contracts are coming up, where maybe the highway has a a unit that works a different hours, so they're still on straight time. You know, there's plenty of things to do after hour, after two-thirty, you might look at increasing the police department, where we talked about a highway unit where these six or seven officers, this is their assignment in the afternoon, during the day, they're writing these speeding tickets, weighing these trucks, doing these other things. Um but yeah, I I don't wanna be afraid if it works.
Char- Charlie, just a, on, just piggybacking off of that too, I mean, some of this is gonna provide us observations, not just in terms of do we change traffic patterns, but you know, blinking the light is also i- in a sense, kind of feeling what it's like if we remove the light. And in those circumstances, for instance, we can see the use of roundabouts that are often installed as sort of being the regulatory capture to allow traffic to move and flow in a safe way, so it's, it could also advise us potentially on some infrastructure changes that can be made.
Look, you you got a lot of things going on, you got, if this hospital goes in where the college is, there's gonna be some huge changes to thirty-nine. changes to thirty-nine, you know, so. You know, people say to me, you know, we get a lot of, a lot of people that are on that greenfield development. They want that light. I know you've been working with Mark, we're gonna make some changes on the end. We're gonna make some changes on McGee Street too to make a, a longer turning lane, uh, for when we're not there blinking the light. People like start referring to fifty-eight in Riverhead. There's lights all the time. And traffic moves, but they don't ha- uh, to me, they don't have that trade parade. They have shopping traffic. They have, you know, they have just normal, everyday, it's a busy place, traffic. But they don't have the times that we have.
I, I think a good example of what you're trying to do is Route one twelve, that runs north, south in Port J. When the state renovated that road, they didn't expand the roads. They kept it one way each way.
No, no.
And, and it works.
Well, was I even, I even asked Alex Gregor, uh, so, Gregor about putting in a center divider on that road just to take out all the back and forth across that road traffic and make it safer for people because right now it slows down traffic because you have people coming out of every business trying to make a left onto thirty-nine and they're riding that center lane until they can jimmy their way and everybody gets in their brakes.
I think that's.
And the, and the county is still evaluating all of that. I do, I do wanna, I do.
Well, that's what I asked him. I said, please don't, if you can't make it faster, please don't shortchange us on making it safer.
I just wanna say to, to somebody that you said earlier, I think, I think that the, the county study is still ongoing. And when we met with them, you know, they're, they're still evaluating a number of different things. So it's not that this is done. Um, they're still working on this. And I think this can also be a good way for them to understand so, so the traffic patterns a little bit more, um, uh, concretely if we do something like that.
Yeah, I, look, it's, it's radical, I get it. And Jimmy Cannon said it to me, he goes, Sean, what are we gonna do if this works? And you know what? Uh, I think we could tell everybody in this township that we tried something, it looks like it works. And in the future, we're gonna try to.
Think of something.
Right. Now, I'm not about, uh, you know, people always talk about, uh, we're gonna call them activity goals, like in police departments that the officers have writing tickets and people all think that when you write a ticket, the, the town gets all the money and that's, you know, it's a money grab. They don't realize that there's fees that go to the state and, you know, on a regular V and T traffic ticket, the town gets very little if anything. Meanwhile, you're funding the local court, but the monies aren't there. The only monies are in, in town codes because we get all of the, all of the things. So me and Jimmy talked about this and now that we invested in this camera that, that, uh, speed camera that takes pictures and, and they have and again, um, we're not trying to hurt people, but if you have areas that they violate a V and T law, that could also be a town code. And we can use the video to find people violating the town code. I think that.
We know where to direct enforcement.
We know where to direct enforcement, but we also may have some finances to help with the cost of these.
Of this program.
Right, as, as we go forward. I'll give you an example. You put that camera on that no left turn onto Shrubland. Every morning, there's a line out the door for people making the left. I get it. The state police, the town police can't put somebody there all the time. But we would get, be able to find these people if we pass some resolutions or some town codes. That video, uh, evidence, and again, it doesn't go on your license. It's like video evidence of somebody illegally dumping. There's your witness.
Like the school.
Exactly. Um, and again, we're not looking to hurt anybody, but you have people violating these turns and so on. Where I think some of those finances could offset these, these costs.
Good idea. Gotta try it.
So here's my, here's my only input on your whole plan. And that is looking at the Hampton Bay's two lanes turning on.
Yeah.
When you're heading east, that stays one lane. I don't think you should allow thirty-nine to open to two lanes heading west. And then just to shut it back down after that.
And again, the only reason my thought was on that was that two lane. No, two lanes coming out of the village.
No, you can do that, but that lane, it opens up to two lanes between like the, between the, the pest control place and the light.
Yeah.
Like I don't.
Oh, no, that'll, that, that's gonna be one lane. That's gonna be one lane for sure.
But it doesn't make sense to open that.
No, no. Does not make sense. And I counted, it's twenty-five extra cars fit in that second lane. And then it's off to the races when that light turns green. So, you, look, you're already in traffic, only twenty-five cars, you move up twenty-five cars from David White's, not worth it. Keep it one lane and then they stay in that lane. And we're gonna sign it. Express lane to twenty-seven. We stay in the middle. As we get further down, I don't know if we can help St. Andrews. Because it's on a bad curve to try to get the cars to move over will work. But we will be able to help Shrubland. As they start to, start to get their distance, we're gonna start with signs, merge left, merge left, merge left. And again, the goal is that people don't come out of Shrubland, but if they are, they'll be able to come out because people hopefully will move over.
What's the date you want to start?
So originally, the school gets out April fourteenth. Uh, we're gonna do the next week, that Monday, for two weeks.
There's a paper road that runs along where Shrubland is. There's a paper road between County Road Thirty-Nine and the golf course.
The, if you look at that bus stop there.
Yeah.
Shrub, I, it's, I'm not gonna bash my colleagues at the county, but.
It's an wrong place.
That could've been an easy way to put a, at least a merge on instead of a T from Shrubland to get onto thirty-nine.
Yeah.
You know how many?
We reached out to them about that a few, a few years ago. We talked about that.
Yeah. I mean, there's people that live there, I get it, but you have the bus stop.
Well, that was the whole thing and that's why I said to Alex Gregor, if you put that center divider in and take out the center lane, it would give you room to have these, right now, it's like.
Shoulder, shoulder.
Yeah, people pull out of these businesses and you're into the second lane because there's no room.
And there is that rare occasion where somebody's in front of you looking to make the same, the opposite turn. And now you're like.
Charlie, are, are, is there, um, outstanding permits that we would need for all?
Yes, I'm on, I'm on all of that. Um.
So we're still waiting for the county to?
The state permits.
I sent permits in. I sent my ideas in. I met with the county.
Okay.
They came back. There's all kinds of.
Revisions?
No, this, it's signage. There's distance of cones, there's all these things, I get it. You know, they got, they have their rules and stuff. So they sent it back. I did not send it back because I wasn't sure of the dates and I wasn't sure of the support of the board.
Okay.
Yeah, my support.
I mean, as long as you have the chief and the chief behind you.
Two chiefs.
The village board outside, ma- mayor says that you've been talking to him.
Well, they've been struggling for years trying to.
And so, being in the county, you know, they had some buying, it's their road, so they should help.
So they, I'm meeting with them Wednesday. If the board, if I get everyone's support, I will finish up the permits, get them in. Alex knows they're coming, Neve, I've been working with, with Neve in the county. And by the way, I, again, I'm not bashing them. They actually helped me with the, the stop sign up in the circle in New York. Uh, at Long Beach. They were against it. Kinda swayed them. So we're gonna give that a shot.
With that, too, right?
What's that?
Did you work with Dan Walker on that one too?
Yeah.
Is that happening as a pilot as well? Like, was trying it out?
I, well, basically, I told them, if it doesn't work, I'll take it out. So we'll call that a pilot program.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, but I, I'm confident uh, that this is actually gonna work. Now, you may hear from the businesses that they get more business when traffic's heavier because people bail. But, you know, we, we can't be.
It's a quality of life issue for our residents.
Probably in your first place, too many fur cuts on thirty-nine.
Yep. And you have, you have all kinds of people that can't get employees because the traffic's so good. The town alone, you know, so. Any questions?
You're gonna put up signs that say, you know, traffic pattern, new traffic pattern?
It's just, it takes one little vendor, vendor.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
Yep. So we're gonna advertise it in the paper, uh, with the survey block, uh, GR code or whatever. We're gonna, uh, the problem is, the county's using all their signs for the Poncar Bridges.
It's open.
I know, but they still have the restrictions on it. So we, we gotta probably, we're gonna rent a few signs.
Which I was talking about.
We have some, but this is gonna be signed all over the place. Signed early.
Village has some too.
Yep. It's gonna be, you know, we're gonna start advertising on the road, maybe two weeks before we do it. Um, and then we'll see. I gotta, you know, Jimmy's gonna have to hear from you too. I mean, I don't know what his numbers are. I have six. He's, he may say, Charlie, I need ten. He may say, I need four. I don't know, you know.
And I know last time we had an issue though, it was pulling, it was actually pulling out people and, and it was asking people to work extra time.
Yeah. So I made it four hours. They have a four-hour minimum. So we did that on purpose. We're gonna set up at three thirty. Close the road at four, finish at seven, and you're out of there at seven thirty. So their minimums will be covered. Um, this round, my whole crew is on overtime. When we did the morning, we, we just started a half an hour early and everybody took it in comp time. So there wasn't a big impact financially on the highway department. This is a full-blown, everybody, you know. But, you know, and, and Romaine said he has money, so maybe we can get some, some money from the county. At least to offset what we're doing since we are covering their road.
Yeah.
All right.
What about the regular cone program?
Oh, when's that start?
That's a Jimmy question. We're always ready to go and end when he wants.
When did we start last year?
I don't know, but people are calling.
I know, I've already gotten emails.
I feel like it was April first.
Well, yeah, that, that's, that rings a bell. Will this be working? And forgive me if you've told me this already, is this gonna be working simultaneously with, with Canoe Place?
This is an afternoon program.
Right, Canoe Place is just morning.
Just morning.
You're gonna be working the Canoe Place in the morning?
Yeah.
While this is?
Yeah.
You've done the afternoon.
I've done the afternoon. Uh, the county, uh, will not give us a permit to blink the light in my traffic pattern. They're telling me that it's, uh, not enough space for the, a left turn at a canoe place going west and cars going west to meet and then go to one lane.
Charlie says wanna see it work.
They could easily make the island smaller. Like, I like the flowers, but if we make the island smaller, we'd have room where it would work. But it's not my road, so.
What about Hill Street? Will that be simultaneous?
Yeah, the village is gonna cover Hill Street.
Okay.
It's gotta be all together, otherwise it doesn't work.
Yeah, I wanna just clarify that.
What do you say, make the island smaller?
If we had the island smaller on Montauk Highway by Canoe Place, then we could have the two lanes, like I said.
Their flowers and a sign.
You wouldn't have to stop if you were going west. You just move over to the shoulder, it's always a green light. And then if somebody was turning from Canoe Place, they'd have room to merge. You know, we also had the issue at North Road. You know, this year-long study for a traffic circle there. We had a turning lane there before the county got that property, that quick claim. We just need to turn a lane back and merge before you get on the bridge. It's that simple.
So much easier.
But anyway. Anything else?
Nope.
Nope.
So I'll move further with the permits and have everybody's support correct.
Yes.
And I'll contact Jimmy and he'll talk to you on the sidebar.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you for being proactive.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Give it a shot. All right. And I'm gonna see you in a few minutes inside then?
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I'll be out front.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to our member gift. Phil, you got something today?
Yes, I'd like to, I'd like to say thank you to, I'd like to say thanks to all the town horse staff who takes care of the bathrooms and the maintenance the last couple of weeks while we had the bathrooms outside. Um, it's very difficult to keep this building go- going without the maintenance staff and the custodian staff. We, a lot of times, a lot of people take it for granted. Uh, but they, they're keeping the place sanitized and clean with no water. Um, for all of us. And, um, plus, they started to pl- paint the front door. I don't think the front door has been painted maybe from Marty Lang or Skip Heenan, he said. Um, that was done by Craig Caola. He went, did it on his own.
It looks so much better.
And, um, Peter said they're gonna continue. And Steve Tasco and Joe Petro, his other people, they're, they're right now, they're fixing stuff and keeping the place going. And the custodian staff. You got Craig Doyle, who is very, very devoted to this building. You see him all over. Um, you got, you got Owen Davis, George Walker, Michael Cole, and Evan, Evan Robinson. They all work very hard to keep this place going. And I just wanna say that from my, my seat, I say thank you very much for doing it.
Same, thank you.
Yeah, they did a great job. Thanking our, our town staff for really, you know, dealing with no water and new bathrooms and, you know, lower level and, you know, first floor staff having to come upstairs and you know, parking restrictions and it's just, it's been a lot and like, it looked to me today like we're getting ready to actually ask for the parking yet, so.
They say, I spoke to Nick and they said hopefully sometime next week. Uh, they have to rip more, out some more black top in the back of the building over where by the school. And a little bit more on this side and hope to maybe next week or the weekend after. Then we have a.
Some normal feedback here.
Two weeks to have a, then we'll start on the outside of the building fixing it up.
Running water into a plumbing in an hallway.
Very good.
And I wanna say thank you to Jim Burke for reaching out to the county board of health and, you know, having them work with us to allow us some leniency on doing some things that allowed us to have indoor plumbing back earlier than we would have, so.
Thank you, Jim.
Nick and Tom were very helpful with that.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim.
Yeah.
All right, good to.
Use those contacts for some credit.
All right, I just wanna notice, tell, tell everyone that the Suffolk County Veterans Resource Fair is this Saturday, March eighth, from ten to one. And that's gonna be at Southampton Village Veterans Memorial Hall, which is adjacent to the Cultural Center of twenty-five Pond Lane. And there'll be a lot of booths and resources available for the veterans. And it's being put forward by Suffolk County Legislature and Welford in partnership with Southampton Village and the town and the county's, uh, Veteran Service Agency and Long Island Cares.
Thank you. Thank you for that.
I'm saying, well, since we were talking about veterans, I'll just say the Hometown Heroes Banner Program um, is up on our website. People can get a banner. There are spots available.
Buy, buy a banner.
Deadline is April eighteenth.
April eighteenth, good to know.
Deadline for buying the banner.
And it is open to anybody who is a town resident or if you have a, if you are a town resident and a family member who wants to honor that wasn't a town resident, that is permitted as well.
Okay.
So I, I'll just say that to, today at four PM is our Women of Distinction event downstairs in the auditorium. We'll be honoring some really important women who've contributed positively to our community here in Southampton. Um, and we've been working on this with the, uh, really the anti-bias task force has taken the lead on that. And I have to also commend Tajay Anderson, our, um, our legislative aide who's worked, uh, with the, the task force to help make sure that this got put on. So we're very, uh, very happy about that. And I'll say, I teamed up with Councilwoman McNamara to collect a number of, uh, items for, um, Heart of the Hamptons. We collected over a hundred items, clothing and non-perishables that have been donated now to the organization. They're very grateful. And it just shows that we are supportive of that organization, which all, obviously helps a lot of families facing food and economic insecurity. And we need to continue to raise awareness on the, the important, uh, economic challenges that many of our families still continue to face.
Well done to you both for doing that.
Thank you.
All right, well, no one else has seen either.
Oh, the only thing I will mention actually is when we met with Molly Bishop, she had mentioned, um, a grant that is available for, like it's a reforestation grant. And she had, you know, brought up there were areas in the town in the trails that have been completely devastated by the pine beetle and, um, I did forward that grant information to our Parks Director and Jackie Benlin at CPF. I've not heard back from Jackie. Um, but Kristen Dulles did get back to me and she said, it is actually very encouraging that the areas they have gone into to see where the devastation is. There is a, already a lot of new growth, a lot of new pine trees that are already started, so. It's positive. And the deadline for that grant was next Wednesday, so everyone's gonna kinda see if they can.
Rush it in.
Yeah. Oh, and I'll reach out to Aaron to have him come in for a work session to talk about the ECDs and the state of the beaches and the Gavian.
Thank you.
All right, so that's it then. I need, I move to go into executive session to discuss personnel, acquisitions, litigation, and then close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.